Folks. Mr. Attorney. Would you give us a report?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. No reportable action from closed session. Direction was given to staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance. We don't have any kids tonight? We do not? I'll ask Eric Smith, Vice Mayor, to lead us, please. Stand. Salute. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Do we have any changes or corrections to the agenda?
We do, Mr. Mayor. And I would like to note, too, just for the record, Councilmember Thompson arrived for closed session and Councilmember Weber had to leave. So we now have a, we have six councilmembers here, just for the record. And for the correction, one correction, which was eagle eyes caught this, which was much appreciated. Section, for item number three on the consent, section D, permit requirements, this is for the ordinance on the dooryard burning. It states, "No person shall conduct opening burning without a valid burn permit." It should say, "No person shall conduct open burning." So there's a typo in there, "open" versus "opening." So we'll make that correction on the, on the ordinance. That's it.
So corrected. Excuse me, my chair is failing on me here miserably. All right. No, any recruses at all tonight? None? Doesn't want to respond, but that's okay. All right, we'll do it. Adoption of the agenda.
I move that we adopt the agenda.
Call the roll, please.
Johnstone.
I was waiting for you to call my name.
All right. Any presentations, proclamations, says none tonight? Public communication, hearing of non-agenda items. Do we have any cards?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. We will begin with Rhonda, follow that with Skipper Clark.
Welcome, Rhonda.
I went to Esperanza last week because the night that I left here, 1:00 in the morning, I was approached by security in front of the library and the police department to get the bee out of me. Okay, so I contacted Pastor Allen on Friday. Well, actually, I came here on Wednesday morning, following morning. And your city told me that to go to the Esperanza, I was welcome. I called Pastor Allen to find that wasn't the case, but he was willing to allow me in. And that, people, brings me to 9,101,450 for the Esperanza, the meaning of hope. Okay, in that meaning of hope, Pastor Allen tells me, "New ballgame. We're good to go." First night there, I run into several people that did me a lot of damage, and they still recognize that they did me that damage, and they don't want anybody else to recognize that. So Saturday night, I have Miss Sherry, which, three years ago, was slamming people against the walls in the mission. I'm not going to splash her, but her history comes from prison to the shelter, family members there. Now Sherry is being paid. Oh, gosh. Help me on this one. Sherry is being paid. 8:30 at night, she comes in and she accuses me of having a vape. Do not inhale aerosol. Thank you. Okay, so I inform her, "I don't vape." And she says, "Not what it says here." And I says, "That is incorrect." The woman is walking out of the room. She says, "You're rude." I come behind her, I say, "This is what we're not doing. Call Pastor Allen." No, she runs in the office, closes the window, shuts the door, calls Annie. Okay, we're qualified. Then the next morning, I run into another one that, less than two years ago, bold-faced lied to Pastor Allen. He ended up taking my side, twice. And then when she was caught, she cried. Okay? She's an employee. Whoa. Yep. Another young man, they can't figure out the rules from one day to the next, and not splash him either, says, "This is what you get when you get a bunch of ex-druggies working together."
Rhonda, your time has expired, your three minutes. Thank you.
I'm glad for this.
Thank you.
That's what you pay for. Now take it back.
Thank you.
Mr. Clark, come on up. Welcome.
About two months ago, I said I was going to do some study and research on the Bree biofuels plant. I developed a list of questions that were given to Albion Energy, and then I've recently just developed a couple more specific ones, got a little more in-depth, and given them to them, so they know what the questions are from, you know, some of the public in Oroville. And my one recommendation to the city would be that the power purchase agreement be negotiated by a law firm experienced in creating them. I don't know if a, you know, agreement's been made yet, but that's, that seems to be very important. Gypson, Colorado, there was a biofuels plant there, it's the only one in Colorado, went bankrupt last year, and they've been in litigation for several years, and it was just complications about things that weren't directly spelled out. So I think that's a good idea. Some specific conditions for Bree. One thing that I think is important is that they would agree to use no municipal or industrial waste besides sawdust as feedstock for the plant. There's a possibility that that plant could be used in that capacity with that type of feedstock. So I think important to spell that out. Ben has a separate leaf trio company that is involved with municipal waste as a feedstock. So there's expertise in that area. And there's a couple other specific things. It's so complicated, but for our area, I think we need a regenerative thermal oxidizer as part of the pollution control device. There's these other devices that will not work quite as well as ours because we have air quality issues, and we have inversion layer in the wintertime that will cause some problems. And I know air quality management is, I talked to them, and they're, they're looking forward to the plant that's now operational in Shasta County. Unfortunately, that's only a quarter the size of this one, and it's nothing like the one that's being proposed for us. It's a, it's not a pyrolysis plant, it is a one that's much lower temperature. The only pollution control, the CMS that they have, is for NOx. Ours is going to require all these other things, and they were hoping to, to learn stuff from there. But it's, you know, it's going to still be some unknowns out there that we're going to have to deal with. So that's my, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Up next, we have the cameraman, followed by Bill Spear.
Good evening, Oroville City Council. Hope everybody has a good Thanksgiving coming up. First, I'll start off tonight with, some of you may or may not have seen, but the Brandy Jacobs matter, which was the case a few months ago where Oroville Police raided this house with these dogs, absolute deplorable living conditions. Looks like she's going to get mental health diversion in the Butte County Court. You know, I'm not a mental health expert, so, you know, I can't really judge, per se, but judging on the size of this voluptuous woman, I find it hard to believe that, you know, a learning disability justifies mental health diversion, because clearly, she wasn't disabled to remember, "Hey, I need to eat," but she's disabled in not knowing that the dogs need to eat and be held in livable standards and not in their own squalor? You know, I think Mike Ramsey's office is dropping the ball on this one, but Oroville Police did an excellent job getting those animals out of there, and they have, majority of them have been adopted, and the before and after photos are just amazing to see that these dogs, skin and bones, able to recover with the help of our local shelter. Another matter, which, you know, Mr. Ramsey and I don't see eye to eye on a lot of cases, but one case in particular we do see eye to eye on is meeting children online for underage for the purposes of sex. And just last month in October, famous predator catcher known as Jedeon, he did a bust here at Nelson School. I want to thank Oroville PD for, you know, taking that matter seriously. Right now, across this nation, it's a really big problem, children being preyed upon, on whether it be Rollbox, Facebook, all these different chatroom apps. And some police departments don't take it seriously because it's done by a private person. And this has literally been in the back of my head for the past six months. It's like, hmm, I wonder if we're going to have a bust in Butte County, whether it's Chico or Oroville, and our local law enforcement, are they going to do the proper job and, you know, arrest these people? And I'm glad to see Oroville Police did follow through on that. Hopefully, the district attorney won't drop the ball on this one with some mental health diversion, but only time will tell. But good job for handling that situation, taking it seriously. And just finally, with the time I have remaining, a few meetings back, I did comment on four-way stop signs needing that little placard. There's, from what I've seen, it's just not one intersection, there's quite a few intersections in this town that could benefit from that for safety reasons.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Up next, we have Bill Spear.
Welcome, Mr. Spear.
Got a verse and a prayer. The verse today is out of Proverbs 18:24. A man who has friends must himself be friendly, but there is a friend who sticks closer than a brother. Than a brother. It's Jesus, our friend. He said, "I no longer call you servants, but I call you friends." Father God, we thank you for what a friend that we have in Jesus, the Author and Perfector of our faith, who, for the joy set before him, went to the cross, conquered the grave, ascended, sent us His Holy Spirit to empower us. And so today, we petition Heaven, ask for Your continued blessings upon our city, upon our city council, upon our police. Thank you for them, for the work they do, for our fire. Thank you for code enforcement, all the issues that are on the agenda tonight. We pray for that supernatural wisdom, supernatural protection. We continue to lift up Rhonda. Thank you that you're making progress in the rescue mission, the work they do. We are so grateful for them and for the little victories. The Hope Center, all the things that we have to be grateful for. We ask Your blessings upon our city, upon the finances, that You would make us a city on a hill, a light on a shelf. Continue to bring His provision, continue to bring healing and wholeness for the people here, for Your kingdom and Your glory, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I have.
That's it? Next item, reports and discussions. Council announcements and reports. Any council announcements? Vice Mayor Smith is on the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to mention that on visitoroval.com, you can make application for the Parade of Lights, which will be December, Saturday, the 13th. Thank you.
Can I ask a question on that? So I actually went online to try to find that application, and it is very difficult just scouring the web to find a link to do that. I eventually did find the link, but just as a consumer going on there, it's not user-friendly trying to find the link for that, so just...
I'll look into it.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Council announcement? I'll make, mention that I attended the biomass conference in Sacramento, downtown Sacramento, Wednesday, the 5th of November. Biomass is a big thing throughout the state of California. In fact, they describe California as the Saudi Arabia of biomass. It's not just the fuels from the forest, but it's all the stuff coming from the cities in terms of leaves, tree trimmings, huge amount of material is available for this type of biomass solution, I guess is the word to use. And in Sacramento, the air quality district, their comments were, "The number one polluter to our air environment is wildfire, number one." And they want everything that can possibly happen to fuel reduction from not only our forests, but from the wildlife events. So it was a pretty interesting conference. I've shared the PowerPoint with all the council members, I'll have it added to the minutes the next meeting, so the public can see it. And it's a big deal. Thankfully, we were a little ahead of the game. In fact, Oroville was mentioned in their report, and it's, it's not just biomass, but it's a bioeconomy coming our way. So I found out that we are a BDO, Patrick, is that the right? Business? Or biomass development opportunity zone?
That's right.
And that's pretty rare.
Will you get credits or anything for that?
Kind of, we do, yeah. In circles.
Yeah, you do.
And the big thing about Oroville is it's at the 75-mile center of the BDO. And the people in Sacramento said, "How did you form a BDO? How did you do it?" And it's like, I had to ask Patrick, I don't know, you know? But City of Oroville is at the 75-mile perimeter of all this activity. So I look for many more things coming our way from the, what they call the bioeconomy. It's a good thing, we can work on all the issues, appreciate the comments, questions about how to make sure this, you know, doesn't pollute and all those things. We've got no interest in doing that. But truly, many, many places are doing things about this that I had no knowledge of. The burning plant that's burning rice straw in Dulce, the North Star, they're burning wood waste from the fuel reduction and sending hot water to the resorts and heating up the resorts with it. Really? It's like, really? Okay. So there's just a lot more to be learned out there, and it's a new topic for us all to look at. The only thing, I wanted to thank everyone for the Veterans Parade, it was very nicely well done and very well organized. It turned out really nice, everyone was there. I wanted to lean toward Brian to talk about the Riverbend Apartments. We had a meeting and short discussion about that, if you would.
Yeah, ultimately, we had a, the Housing Authority actually reached out to us and wanted to get some input on that, so we were able to provide some clarity to the Housing Authority on all the actions that the city and city staff have taken with regards to trying to resolve that. And unfortunately, we're still at, I would say, a stalemate right now. We're awaiting to hear back from the developer on if they're going to do the necessary short-term improvements with the agreement on doing the long-term improvements that are needed for the storm drain, stormwater infrastructure over by Riverbend Apartments. So should know more this week, and I'll be sure to send a message out to the council with an update.
Okay. No other council comments? I'll look to staff reports. Amy, looks like she's ready to go.
Yes, I just wanted to update you that, as I expected, they did postpone the CDBG application to the middle date. It was going to be in January, it's now in April, so we have a little bit of time. I'll come back in the next month or so with a new recommendation.
Hopefully, that'll be good news. Who's up next? Go ahead.
Sure, I'll go. We had a meeting last week with our state lobbyist, Mr. Paul Yoder, and one member from his team, and it was a good meeting. We had a number of councilmembers came to meet with Mr. Yoder and his staff, and all department heads had an opportunity to meet with them. I just wanted to focus or share a number of the things that were discussed. Potential legislative efforts to address vernal pool issues. I know we've talked about this numerous times, and it seems like, obviously, we all want to see appropriate treatment of the, of our climate, but we also want to make sure we have some reasonable mitigation efforts to deal with vernal pools, if, to obviously deal with another big issue in California, and that's market rate housing. So, and that's one issue that they're helping us with. We had a lot of discussions on really trying to find opportunities to get those that, medical attention, that are, that need medical attention, specifically a lot of our in-house folks that need medical attention. So we had a lot of discussions on that. There are some changes in the, in the pipeline I wanted to make sure everyone's aware of in this coming new year. The definition of gravely disabled, which is a key variable when it comes to conservatorships, is being modified slightly. It's going to, typically, gravely disabled has always included food, clothing, and shelter. Those are three things that, you know, if, if an individual is having issues with food, clothing, and shelter, then conservatorships could come into play. There is going to be a new variable there, that those who suffer from substance abuse disorders also could be included. You know, ultimately, it's still going to take a lot of effort, a lot of work, to show that an individual is really not meeting their basic needs, but the state is trying to adapt and trying to, I think, come up with ways to provide these folks that are on the streets, help that they need. So we had a lot of discussions on that. We also talked about the environmental concerns, the council wrote that letter to Governor Newsom recently about the Feather River. Talked about the levy a little bit and the desire to get 200-year certification, and we talked about, you know, obviously, the desire that we have a lot of issues and a lot of needs and for funding opportunities at the state level as well. They do have an earmark process as well, but as of late, there has not been funding in that. The last one, I know, was a few years back, so, but we should know more in the new year if there's going to be any opportunities there. But we did mention, obviously, a lot of our infrastructure projects, curb, gutter, sidewalks. So it was a good, good conversation in both Mr. Yoder and his team, and the Ferguson Group will do a presentation to the full council at the next meeting, so that will be coming. Let's all have.
Put it on this side of the aisle, anybody? Alyssa's got her hand raised.
Sure, yes. I can talk a little bit about 3-1-1 requests, so those are coming in, and it's been a great resource. There was a, we had a meeting with Catalyst today, and as a follow-up, they've just been a great company to work with, and they were just kind of following up and checking in to see how their software is working, and we've let them know we're, it's, it's working great. I've received great feedback from staff as well. There were 41 in October, a lot of them sweeping potholes and drainage-related, at least for public work specifically.
Do you have a question you need to ask?
No, I have something that I wanted to discuss after all the reports.
Okay, all right.
Okay. So at the airport, the crack ceiling and the runway remarking projects are set to begin. There's just been a little bit of a delay due to the weather. Coventry, you'll also see there's a storm drain project going on, as well as on Lincoln, there is a sewer project going on. So you will see Lincoln closed for probably about a week, week and a half or so while that work is taking place. Hewitt Park Community Day was on November 4th, and it was a success. About 25 people came. Out at Bedrock Park, work is progressing with Melton Design Group. The survey is complete now. The Montgomery Roundabout Notice to Proceed was issued today, so effective today, they have 45 days to complete the work. That's, that's just regular business days, so they'll also get extra time if there's weather delays. But they are, they just recently submitted their traffic control plan, so we are working through that right now. Just a reminder, though, that most of the work will take place at night, but there may be a day or two when they're doing paving operations where there may be closures during the day at that roundabout. Greenville Drainage, so the drawings are complete, but we're still currently working on a specification package, a spec package. We're also working through environmental documents with Caltrans for Washington Avenue and Table Mountain Boulevard Complete Streets. There, in October, there were street sweeper challenges, but both sweepers are now up and running. A lot of herbicide spraying, red curb painting, pavement repairs on Zephyr, Fort Wayne, and Nelson, a lot of irrigation repairs as well, stump grinding and brush removal along the Feather River Trail. And all museums will be closed from November 23rd through February 27th. Also, interviews are going to occur this Friday for that seasonal museum assistant position, and she's also picked up a new graphic design intern, so we're looking for it, yeah, looking forward to some new, new faces. The Lot Tea Workshop was a success, that was on October 12th, completely sold out. December 14th is the next tea workshop, so. It doesn't bring in a lot of money, but it brings in a lot for the Lot Home. I think it was around $120 for us, so it's a win.
It's positive.
And then they also hosted the Halloween Museum Mile Trick or Treat, and there were about 700 visitors to that, so it was, it was well done, and lessons learned there, too, so next year should be better. And that is all I have.
Thank you, and I appreciate the email we have here with all the pictures.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, this, I wanted to comment, I had a meeting with Alyssa Schaffner, and I just want to say, there's, there's, and this goes with every staff, there's so many things that go on behind the scenes that nobody sees. And they're managed, just for context, I mean, we reviewed a few of these, but they're managing 71 different projects right now. Obviously, some of them, like the Montgomery Roundabout, you'll see soon, but it's just, like, it's, I just can't stress enough how many things happen behind the scenes that, that go unnoticed, so.
Appreciate that, because the public rarely sees it, and that's a good point to break forward, and hopefully, anybody watching will see the results of what we're working on. Tracy, your question now?
I don't have a question, so I just want to report. I just went to the Continuum of Care All-Member Meeting this week, and there is a new NOFO out. Amy, I don't know if you, I didn't, you weren't at the meeting, but it's very concerning, so there's some, some changes with the, the new administration that are going to be drastically affecting any new notice of funding opportunities for current, current nonprofit providers that are providing homeless assistance and homeless housing. I'm not quite, I don't understand it all right now, but it's almost because there is a avenue of equity involved with all of the current nonprofits and the requirements for equity. They are now going to lose funding because they have previously complied with the requirements for equitable equity, and they no longer will qualify for, you know, under, you know what I'm talking about, right, Amy? They no longer will qualify based on previous requirements for funding. So we may end up here real soon with a lot more homeless than we have had in the past because nonprofits are going to be losing their, their ability to fund these different programs, so.
So I have just a, just a sliver to share, and it's, the focus is countering those nonprofits that do not have that clinical, that mental health, the behavioral component. It's highly competitive. If you don't have that...
You have to have 40 hours. You're required, per person now.
And so if you went slack and you, you didn't rehire and to keep that position, because initially, when they, these nonprofits, the eligibility criteria was you had to have that mental health, the clinical component. There's a few of them that got a little lax, didn't provide that, and now, yeah, they're asked to be accountable and show that.
Yeah, and on top of that, the nonprofits that have, have been funded and have, have met all of their requirements are now going to be penalized for meeting those requirements and losing the funding because they can, they no longer qualify because they met those requirements previously, so that was a little confusing and concerning to me, but...
It's a kerfuffle.
It is a kerfuffle. However, I choose to believe that we're going to work it out somehow.
It's good to hear, yeah. Vice Mayor Smith is in the queue.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to follow up on the Parade of Lights, Alyssa, your comment about traffic spurred something. Recently, the city has a higher level of requirement when it comes to traffic management, and so in review of the... when it comes to traffic management. And so in review of the parade route, we've modified that route a little bit. And that's really important because the parade of lights brings about 10,000 to 12,000 folks into downtown for that event. And so the parade of lights will be about a block shorter. It will not go up to high. Instead, as it goes up Lincoln, it'll make a left on Robinson and then make a left right in front of State Theater, back down on Myers. The reason why that's super important is that that intersection at Myers and Robinson and front of State Theater is about four feet shorter. And so if you're a parade entry and you got a super long rig, I have contacted other parade folks from the past who had, you know, semis. I've contacted, spoke with CalFire, with the ladder truck. They all say they can make that left-hand turn and it is a little tight. So just, again, just be aware of that. And then for the public participating, coming to watch, just realize we won't be on high. It'll be a block shorter. And so just bear that in mind. And then the map is on visit orville.com under Signature Events.
Councilman Goodson.
Alyssa, you had mentioned there's going to be infrastructure improvements on Lincoln. It's going to be closed for a week. Where is that specifically?
I do not know off the top, but I'm going to look at Tim Cabor over there. He probably knows exactly where it's at.
Between Lionheart and Hager. That's the foreclover.
Yes.
South of Lionheart.
I knew it was in Southside.
Thank you, Tim.
Alright, anybody else, Department head? Oh, Patrick, please.
I do have something tonight. If it's okay, I'd like to show a little PowerPoint.
Sure.
Did he already go?
Go for it.
He didn't go there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, did you go?
I did.
My man.
It was a quick trip. It was, it was really busy. They're really long days. Every day we had about three to three and a half hours of travel, you know, round trip. And then we did two tours every day except for one. And I learned a lot. It was information overload. It was really quite something. And I wanted to share some of the stuff that I learned.
Yeah.
Some of the things I saw. So this is the, this is the power plant that's in Manuela Depot. Ben Talbert built this plant with, with some other guys. So you'll have to excuse the pictures because I am not the best photographer. I was just trying to like listen and shoot at the same time. So on the left is the plant from the outside, the, or from the front. On the right is from the back. And on the middle is the roof. That's the, that's the actual flue that the, any exhaust comes out of. And you can see there's nothing visible coming up. That plant is fully running right there. Here's their feedstock. This all comes in as wood. And I wish that Skipper had stayed to hear this, but they cannot put anything in there. And Ben corrected me at the town hall because I said they could put whatever in. And Ben corrected me that they can't because you need to have a consistent feedstock type and size for it to run efficiently. And the way that they build them, they build them for certain feedstocks. So I also toured a biomass facility that Ben built that does do trash. And I have some slide, or not many slides of that, but it's municipal solid waste. And they put, they put that right through there, but only that goes through there. So ours will only be wood. And I, months ago, I told the guys, you're really going to have to do something to track that wood. So they told me they already do this. So when a tree is cut, it's labeled, they put an RFD code on it. It goes onto the truck. They can, they can look at their software program and know where that, where that log is at any time, including to the point where it's shredded and then disposed of and where the shredding went. So that pile that Ben is standing in front of right there is about, if I'm understanding that right, that's maybe about a, close to a full day's supply of wood. So it's a lot that goes through. This is a pile of the, the company that brings all the wood in, they drop it off. And this is oversized. So they needed to be a certain size to go through the chipper. And they filter it all through. And when they're filtering it through, they also come up with little bits of things that shouldn't be in there at all, like a bag that here and there. They say everyone wants a little, pull a bike out of there. But they put it all into this pile and they make the, they make the delivery company take it back and take it off of their bill because they have an arrangement that they're only to be getting a certain size shredded wood. This is a video. I don't know if you can run that, but Hector, turn the sound off, it's so loud. So this is, this is on the floor where they, it moves really slowly. You barely see it if it's, if it's even running. You can barely see it moving and it just, it just moves slowly. That's about nine feet deep. Well, it, on this floor, it could anywhere be anywhere between two and three meters deep. It just moves really, really sluggishly. And it kind of feeds slowly into the, into the biomass facility. This, you turn this one on too. This is a boring little video, but this is a second filter. It goes, comes out of that big pile, it goes through that thing, and then right into that little chunk area right there is the last bits that, that are oversized. This is a picture inside. And so, you know, the difference between gasification and combustion is there's no air in this. This is, this is just hot heat that just makes it so hot that it actually just turns into a gas. I mean, and that thing is, is hot in there. And then gas runs through on the left. It's really hard to get a good picture of it because it's just, it's kind of tight in there. And these things are big. But on the left is a, is where the tank is, where the, where the water is. And pipes run through it. And I have a shot later on that kind of illustrates how that works a little bit better. On the right is the filtration system. You can see how big that thing is, right? Both of them. So the water, the, the heat comes out of the boiler that is kind of like, oh, that thing doesn't work there. It's sort of at the, at the left end, all the way down at the end of that railing. The heat comes through that, that, that whole thing on the, on the left. And then it moves around. So that's, that's all the gassy stuff moves around. It boils the water. The water turns into steam and it goes up through a bunch of pipes. It comes out of here and then it goes through on the, on the right. And that is the filtration system. That entire thing there is the filtration system. Here's a closer view of the filtration system. And so below it is a plenum that goes all the way across. And the, the, the gas that comes through the, through the, the heated water thing, the, the tank, comes through, it goes underneath. Inside there is roughly, the one that they're going to build here is going to have 2,400 of those ceramic filtration candles. This one is about one-third that size. So, you know, maybe 800 or so of those filtration things. Down there on those little sort of valve-looking things on the side, those are, they're like air blasts. And so they blast air at the, at the candles, what blows the, the, the stuff that the candles collect, and it just falls straight down. There's a door that, there's a flap that opens. It's timed with the, with the blast that opens up as the blast goes and it captures it and falls it down. And then there's not, there's not a whole lot left that comes out of it because it really does gasify. Here's a picture of the turbines. I'm up on the roof for this right here. You can see that. That's all steam. There's no smoke in that. That's just steam coming from the, from the boiler. And here's the stack. So I put the two pictures there because you can see on the left, there's nothing coming out of it that you can see. And then over there closely, we stood right at the base of that stack for probably 10 minutes. And we just talked about what comes out of the stack. And you can't smell anything. There's, literally there's no smell. You don't feel like you're breathing anything, any particulates, nothing. It's just air up on the top. And down on the ground where the wood is, it's really quite pleasant. It smells like freshly cut cedar. Here's inside the control room. I took a bunch of pictures. They were scrolling through and I just kept taking pictures. So this is what they, they, this is what they're monitoring constantly through the, through the whole thing. And then that right there is the kill switch. And when I asked to have my picture taken, they freaked out. They did not, they did not like me getting that, close that button because you touch that button, it shuts the whole thing off. So this is, you know, it's, it's very clean. It's very advanced. It's, it's highly filtered. Europe has really high standards. And Californians are actually higher than, than what's over there. This is a picture, I'm not going to go through the whole thing of this, this plant, but this is a picture of the, the trash sorting facility. So that first one was a five-megawatt. This is an 18-megawatt. And basically, inside that building is three full setups of the one that you saw in the last one. They have, they have a floor where they bring in the municipal solid waste. They just dump it on the floor. It's a little smelly in that room. But then it gets picked up, gets dropped into a shredder by this, by a big claw. And then it starts to run through the thing. This right here is a video of a guy explaining how the whole thing works. And what I think, rather than show it here right now, I'll just invite anyone that would like to see it. I can send it to you or anything. It's, it's actually pretty interesting. It explains how an entire biomass facility works. But it's like three minutes long. So I won't labor everybody here for that. This right here is a smaller version of a biomass thing. So Ben's dad invented these, these burners. And there are these small things that you can put into a, this is how he got into the business. But this right here is a, is on a factory setting. There's four factories that are heated by this thing. You know, in England it's cold. And so there's four factories on this site that are all heated by that. And it's a one-megawatt system. And you can see, like, this room right here is 1,600 square feet. The guys are explaining to me, they normally have like less than half of that. And it's like a weird puzzle trying to figure out how you're going to fit everything in. So they're telling me it was sort of a dream to build it in this because it's really spacious. Over here on the left is the, is the grinder. So they put all the, they just put, the factory does something with wood and they take all their wood chips out and they run them through there. It grinds them down into small little bits. And then the, there's a, they just drop pallets in there too. That little bucket on the left, somehow this thing sorts out all the nails and it spits it out into that bucket. And then the rest of it gets vacuum sucked up into that tank on the right, up into that silo. And then it's fed, oh, I didn't put a picture of that. It's fed into this, it's just fed in, it comes out basically like hamster cage shavings. It's really, it's really, it's really tiny. And it feeds into the burner. And it's like just super efficient. So this is in the factory. And this gives you kind of a better idea about how, this is like, this is just a small version of those big biomass plants. And that thing on the left, that is a burner that doesn't, or that's the boiler. So that thing would be filled with water and those pipes would carry the, the heated burnt fuel through those pipes. And then they run through a whole system that goes, I won't labor it, gets really intensive and maybe kind of boring. To me, it was super interesting. But, but then off the burner, off that boiler comes the steam and then it runs through the pipes and it heats up the factory. And like I said, that one that we saw just in the last thing heats four factories. On the left is one that's almost built. You can see the, the brickwork on the inside. On the floor is this sort of stepped thing. And that's how, when I showed that picture before, that big pile of wood that I, the chips that I said was about six to nine feet, that thing, they move and they move like those machines, those coin machines at the, at the casino, right? Really slow. And they move like one by one. And you can, those things are so thick in that other one that you can just barely see it moving, but you can kind of see them falling and trickling down. Same thing with here. It's just constantly pushing it through. And then the ash gets to the end. And there's a surprising little amount of ash that comes through with this because it just gasifies. It just turns into nothing. And then on the right, or there's a better picture on the left of the, every other one of those moves. And then they don't move altogether. And on the right is a screw. So those are kind of like an auger thing. That moves the, the chips from the little hopper where they come out. I wish I'd put that picture in. And then moves that up into the gasifier. So the thing that, the other thing that, that we looked at, that they're, they're bringing this technology here that is fascinating, is this, this enzyme technology. So enzyme technology is not, you know, it's thousands of years old because it's what we make alcohol with. And, you know, it's kimchi, you know, it's, it's a really whole technology. But these guys have taken it to a whole other level. So they've identified 250 different enzymes. And depending on what you put into them and what enzyme you use, it gives this really high output of fuel. And so this is what they're putting up at the SCORE plant. So they've already been talking to SCORE. SCORE started talking to the other cities. And the other cities are considering trucking their stuff down is what I've been told. I don't really know if that's true or not, but I don't know why they wouldn't actually. Because SCORE, Glenn had told me that they were probably going to have to expand and put another pond somewhere on their thing and probably buy some property off-site across the street. But with this, they don't have to. So these ponds, you know, they, they put everything in the ponds. It's wet, stays wet all through the winter. And they have to start moving it around. They dry it. Once it's dried, they start hauling it to Neil Road. But with this, they can put it straight in through wet. And so it just, it just dissolves, eat everything's up. And what comes out of it is ethanol. So it's a gas that you can use to run, you can run a steam generator, you can run just a generator itself, you can go straight to electricity, or you can tweak it just a little bit and you can have something that will run an airplane or a jet. So it's basically bioethanol. So they're gonna, they're gonna bring that here. And they're gonna bring, they want to build a, one of their labs to produce these enzymes, like on the site here. And then they also want to build a factory that will build the, that will build the, whatever they are, still haven't seen those, but that people could buy and put at their facilities around the, around the state, around the country. So it's really exciting. There's a lot of things that are coming here to Oroville that's all around this. And I got to see most of it. It's like, it, it is real. It, it exists. And they're really, they're really going to do it. Yeah.
Yeah. Cool. Thank you. Vice Mayor Smith is in the queue.
Yeah, thank you. Great presentation. Awesome slide deck. As the old proverb states, a picture is worth a thousand words. And the best picture was you standing by that stack with not being able to see any emissions. That was pretty impressive, I have to say. And to Skipper, Clark's concern about the, the type of material, as I understand it, and just for clarification, because you mentioned one of the processes looked like they were processing pallets. And there was nails, I think you mentioned, that are, this project will not include anything. It would only be forest product only here in Oroville. I just want to clarify that because that was a voice, a concern he voiced. And, and, and in their plant, obviously, they use some other materials. So I just wanted to point that out, that, that we would not be doing that here.
No, that's a good point. And that one that I showed, that's a private, I mean, that's a small one-megawatt system. They'll build those things, they can build them down like two, 200 kilowatts. So they can be really small. But those are privately owned and they're just, you know, the ideal place would be like, say, a farmer or like an orchard, a grower that has a lot of trimmings that they just, they can't, they don't want to haul it away. They can't burn it anymore. So they could, they could run it through there. Or like a furniture factory that has a lot of end cuts or a mill, you know, could just put one of those in there and they can run all their stuff through there. But it can generate, like that one that you saw there can generate one, one full megabyte. So it could go, like for them, they use it for heat. But it could also be used to run a turbine or an engine. So it can also actually power your plant and heat it at the same time.
Great report, though. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks. And thanks for, you know, I was going to go, I really wanted to, I just felt like going over to the vet the guys and make sure that everything is real. And, I mean, they're partners that they're working with, or it's, I mean, they're, they're actually, they're very like, kind of humble when they're here. They're kind of big shots. They're like, you know, it's, it's impressive to see the, the, like who they roll with. You know, they're, they're not, they're really pretty well respected in their field. So.
Councilman Johnstone has a question.
Just a real quick question. And I've been asked before, that you say that, that it's only going to be forest products, right? But how, how are we going to guarantee that it's just forest products and it's not mixed in with anything else? I mean, is there a safeguard in place to guarantee that?
Well, they, they are going to be having, I mean, they're going to be logging everything that goes in there. So cradle to grave. So that was, you could take that both ways. They're going to be logging the material, bringing it, but they're going to log it in and, and bring it out. So everything that comes down there that goes through their gate will be, will be identified, will be tracked. And it'll be like, they'll know where it came from, from what forest, where it came from in the forest, what truck hauled it down there, and then where it sits, and then who ground it, and then when it goes into the, into the pile. Actually, I don't think they can say exactly when it goes, because you saw like those piles are a few trees. So, you know, like, but, but nothing else is going into that plant. Yeah.
At the conference, I mentioned that was a topic, especially for the, the new plant that's operating up at, up in Burney area. One of the other questions that came to them about pile management, when it rains, what do they do with wet sawdust? And they added an answer to that. They actually have diversion materials in there that actually preheat and remove the moisture so that they burn at the right composition rate. And they also, it's kind of like the same technology that cannery has. If you go down to cannery, they can tell you where that peach, where it came from and what tree it came off of. So.
And where the can went. Yeah, it's very, you're right. I mean, tracking is so easy now.
Right. The tracking issue is a big deal for all these commodities that are using product. And I think they'll have a responsibility to that. So I, I mean, this was a topic that the, and I, the operator of that particular facility was talking about it and explaining, then showed pictures. And it was pretty impressive because they're planning on building many more of those plants in California.
Yeah, there, I mean, there's so much fuel. These guys, they're looking at. Yeah, there, I mean, there's so much fuel. These guys, they're looking at doing, is it 4,000 acres a year, I think, is what they think that they'll move through here. And, you know, at the town hall, I said, I said this, that we had that call with Butte Fire Safe Council, and at first they weren't too sure about, and then they started getting really excited, well, how much wood are you gonna do? And they said 4,000 acres, and they went, oh, because there's 387,000 acres in the county that needs to get disposed of. And even once all of that's gone, let's say that 40 other plants built, and they're all, like, going through all that stuff, the forest management part of it later is actually really quite important. So once we clear out all the dead stuff, then they can start to get to the, like, more positive business of forest management, cleaning out all that low stuff. And, you know, more than most, Chris, about, like, you gotta get rid of that low stuff so that it doesn't, I mean, hand crews can't go in there anymore. Once it gets up into the tops, you know, so you want to get the low stuff so that it doesn't have the opportunity to get up there.
Well, you go ahead.
I'm sorry, there's gonna be like, that's what I was asking, too, is there's gonna be ongoing, like, once all of this, you know, debris and stuff is removed, and it's all reused from all the different plants that are going, I mean, are we ever gonna run out of debris to burn?
Butte Fire Safe Council says no.
Well, I think between the fire, the salvage timber for fire operations and the beetle kill, the beetle kill, people don't realize, there was estimates of 2,000 pounds per acre, 2,000 tons per acre of beetle kill. So that's another component that's out there, so.
But then we'll be burning beetles?
Probably. Hopefully, hopefully not, I guess. But the other thing, and I did, I don't know if I said in this room, but I did at the town hall, that they also plan to operate that, their plant as a, as a lab, a working lab. So it'll be a training facility, but they're gonna have a full-on mock-up control room of the one that they, that they actually will be, you know, monitoring everything. And the, they'll have a viewing station, and they're gonna invite people to come in and tours and all that stuff, right? And, you know, the one that I showed, the first one that we saw in Italy, that one is, that one's 13 years old. The one that we saw, that the trash sorting facility, that one is only like four or five years old. And Ben, the way that he talks about it, like, he is, he's so proud of his work, and what he wants to do here. Like, that's, I think that it's kind of a moving thing, and we should have him do that at the next town hall. But he is, because he talks about, like, the things that he learns from, from the past, and the things he wants to do differently. So this one that he's building here is sort of like his dream, like his, you know, like, like, the one that he wants to build, you know, the one he's really excited about. It's fun to hear him talk about, because he's really, really, like, really passionate about it.
Quick reminder, when's the next workshop?
Thanks. It's December 8, 5:30 PM at the Stream Charter School.
Oh, December, what happened to December 10? What's that?
You know, we were, we were hunting for a date, or, sorry, for a location.
Okay.
And the, this one really worked out the best.
December 8 at Stream?
At Stream Charter School.
All right, we'll get that word out there.
5:30 PM.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Look around the room. Okay, we'll move forward. I think it's time to call the public hearing. I'll start that now. It's, what are we, 5:35? Public hearing on item number 19, the first reading of the ordinance of the 1891 adopting the 2025 California Building Standards Code, Housing Code, Fire Code, and related codes. Patrick? Okay, Mr. Ritchie.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So this public hearing has to do with an updated adoption of the building standards codes, and our sections that involve the fire code have numbering changes from prior year changes. In this particular instance, the building standards has more codes in it, and that changes the numbering of the fire codes. So there are no substantive changes to what we have here, and we wanted to make this available and open for public comment, because we've noticed it. We don't have an update yet, or a red line of where those sections will fall. So what we're proposing we do is open this for public comments, take whoever is here now, and then we're gonna suspend this public hearing so that you can have that red line copy of the new sections, so that, you know, it's not a mystery to you. But there are no real substantial, substantive changes, it's just a numbering issue with respect to the fire code portions of this.
Thank you.
So that's where we are right now with it, and just invite the public to comment on it. We'll continue it, and that'll come back to the next meeting for continuation. Then it'll later come back for the second reading and adoption.
Do we have any cards on this item?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
No cards? Any public wish to speak on it, as a public hearing item? Seeing that and hearing that, how we close the public hearing?
Hold it open, and then we will resume at the next meeting with the red line, and then you can close it, and we'll have, you know, then we'll close it at that point.
Get an item, we will hold open to the next meeting.
So that'll come along at the next meeting.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
So we'll move past next item?
There isn't, yeah, there's another public hearing.
Yep. Item number 20, which again is a public hearing for resolution of the Oroville City Council acknowledging the project completion of Lincoln Street Family Apartments, and to close out the Community Development Block Grant 21-D R M H P-21003-N T P 1.
And before we open the public hearing on this one, Mr. Mayor, so we are going to pull this item and renotice it for a future meeting. Because we don't know the date for this, we're gonna just go through a full, a full new renoticing. And it has to do with that, you know, there's some auditing and so on that's going on. So we're not quite ready here. We thought we would be, but it's not going to be. We don't have a date yet.
Okay.
So we're gonna table this one entirely and bring it back at a new meeting after we renotice it.
As it is held, public hearing, do we have any comment cards for this?
Yeah.
All right, and see.
We'll renotice that one.
We'll renotice it. So we, now we'll close the public hearing at?
Leave it, everything's open, there's no open public hearings. We got an open one for?
So, so be it.
We'll move on to the next item if that's okay.
That's what he said.
Yeah, that's what he said, right.
Thanks.
All right, we'll move forward then. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Just a note with the, the open public hearing completed at, what, 5:40, I guess. Let's go back to our regular agenda, which was consent. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Goodson.
To the attorney, is there a deadline when this has to be voted on?
So the open public hearing 19 is continued until the next meeting.
Right.
And then after that, it'll come back for a second reading and adoption. Number 20 is under audit, so we'll bring it back as soon as we get clearance to be able to bring that back. But that'll be a first public hearing on that item. And then, Amy, I'm not sure what your process is for that beyond that, but there's no, you know, there's no time sensitivity, it just needs to be ripe before it comes to you.
The building, the building codes do go into effect in January, but we do have two meetings. We have enough time to get that one.
Right, the building codes, you know, this is built-in time for that.
Okay, thank you.
With that being concluded, we'll get back to the consent agenda. Any items on the consent agenda, or do we have any cards on any consent items? Okay, number six, Thompson. Any others? That being said, I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda with item number six pulled by Councilman Thompson.
So move.
Second?
Call roll, please.
Motion passes, six yeses, one absent.
Councilman Thompson, you have the floor.
Thank you. On this one, just as a matter of curiosity, I didn't see it, the contract references Exhibit A. I looked for it. Am I missing something? It's on the service agreement with Speed Zone Engineering. Does it need to be in there? Because it refers to it, Exhibit A, Exhibit A.
I'm guessing Exhibit A is probably the proposal from the contractor.
Pardon?
It should be part of the agreement. Yes.
Yours is done. So it, does, does it need to be in this, what we're seeing here? Because it's, it's?
I need to just take a quick look.
Okay, because it's not there.
While he's looking, I want to ask another question of Alyssa. This is something you discovered that we needed to do, is that correct?
Yes. Well, it's a team, yep, team effort. This was raised to our attention during a training that Tim and I attended. And generally, these need to be done once every, like, five to seven years, and we are in year 14-plus.
I definitely want it done. I just want to make sure that, I went looking through it, I'm like, okay, especially after previous things that we've gone through.
But this gives our police department the ability to enforce. Is that a correct assumption?
Yes.
Using radar, LiDAR.
Okay. Good catch, thank you.
So do we need to redo it, or what's?
I don't believe so. Hold on, I'm just pulling it up. It takes a while to get the full packet. For six. So this one.
Councilman Thompson, where's Exhibit A referenced in the?
Oh, all over it. Good item number one and four.
Under services, in payment for services, this is, Exhibit A is the method of payment in this particular contract, under four, payments for services of the 47,263. So you'll see.
But it's also?
And time of performance, payment, and those things in Exhibit A. And those are from the proposal, I believe. Let me see.
I think it's also talks about the scope from what I've been looking at. The scope needs to be in Exhibit A as well.
And that should be from the proposed, the R and P, or the proposal that it be received. I don't know if Tim can clarify this for me or not.
I don't know that it's something to clarify. I think it's just missing, we are actually missing the?
Let's bring it back.
Yeah, we're missing the agreement, or the scope, the proposal that was provided to us by that contractor.
So that would be in the proposal. We'll bring that back with the attachment.
Okay, thank you. Good catch on both parts. Here we go. All right, folks, thank you. Thank you, Councilman Thompson.
Well, with a little bit of history of stuff.
Yes. All right. So with that being said, it'll be brought back, and we've approved the consent agenda. Now we go to regular business. Regular business, item number 13, appointments and reappointments to the Citizens Oversight Committee, Measure U.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I will take this one. This item concerns appointments and reappointments to the Citizens Oversight Committee, Measure U. In accordance with the city's appointment procedures, applications were solicited and reviewed for the available vacancies. At the executive committee meeting held on October 28, the committee reviewed the qualified applicants and is recommending the appointment of three individuals, Dakota Quinn, Richard Chamberlain, and Alicia Lapp, with proposed term dates beginning today through November 18 of 2027. In addition, there are several current committee members that have terms that have expired and are eligible for reappointment. To maintain continuity on the committee, the council is also being asked to consider reappointing Mark Grover, Dave Quintel, and Ken Malone, with proposed term dates beginning today through November 18, 2029. This concludes my report.
I will make a mention, I appreciate all these individuals that are volunteering to donate their time. It's a valuable need that we have, as the Measure U was passed with this oversight. So I would certainly entertain a motion to appoint these folks that are volunteering their time.
I move that we approve all of the appointees.
I'll second.
Call roll, please.
Passes, six yeses, one absent.
Thank you.
I have a question on this one.
Amy?
Sure.
Because I've been a part of several committees in this one, included, I don't know, maybe if you start with one, you've got to start with them all. But I'm like, is there a way we can, like, besides saying thank you, you know?
Recognition?
I don't know. But I know we have several other committees that a lot of people, you know, serve on and whatnot. It's just, I don't know.
It's a good idea. We'll?
Credits towards permits, or something. I don't know.
It's tough to do a substantial something.
Gift of public funds and whatever.
No, it's for services rendered, so we'll, we'll let staff explore that idea, and see what other cities do for those folks that do that. Be a good idea.
Maybe a volunteers' recognition and celebration day, and whatever, and trade them all to do.
They used to, they used to give the museum docents a payday candy bar on their?
Oh, that's cute.
Which?
But it might be good to have, you know?
Oh, I totally agree, yeah.
Like, our church, you know, has volunteers, and we do a celebration every year to, we feed them and have a party.
It's a good idea. Well, we'll ask for a little research on it. Yep, good idea. With that being said, we'll move forward to item number 14, authorization to facilitate the airport FBO roof repairs. Who's got this? Alyssa?
I do, yes. All right. Well, so on July 14, earlier this year, Cody, our airport manager, reached out to three different roofing contractors on our CUPCA list, our California Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting list. Two contractors submitted responsive bids, and so one did not. And each provided two different options for roofing of our airport FBO. One of the, you know, one, excuse me, each provided two options. One, minimal repairs limited to the areas currently leaking, and two, full overlay systems offering long-term protection and warranty coverage. So given the importance of this building and the essential nature of the services provided by Genco Aviation, under the city's FBO contract, staff recommend proceeding with the full PVC membrane overlay system, which includes a 20-year manufacturer's warranty, and will ensure long-term building integrity and asset protection. But this does come at a cost of about $160,000. The lowest-cost minimal repair proposal is $15,800, covering only partial patching using silicone, Unibond tape, and Cool Sil coating. This option carries no warranty and would likely result in recurring maintenance costs. We do have this in the airport budget for capital improvements, and so we're just looking to, you know, for approval or direction on how you would like us to proceed. If you want us to look at, you know, more inexpensive options, or rebid, or if you're okay with us proceeding with the full 20-year roof, that has the full 20-year warranty.
You know, Councilman Johnstone?
Thank you. How much do we have in the airport fund?
I want to say we have almost half a million dollars, about $500,000 in capital improvements. Though, not all for the roof. You know, we've had, there's, there's other projects that we'd like to do out there as well.
Right, but I mean, we definitely have the funding to, okay, so I would like to make a motion for the full 20-year warranty repair.
Hold that motion. We have a question from Councilman Goodson.
What's the, what's the pre-existing roof? What are the materials?
Well, right now, so Cody, he helped me out here. It's a metal roof currently with exposed fasteners. It's a red iron building structure, currently four, excuse me, 12 skylights installed, but they don't necessarily seem to be the problem. The leaks currently are coming from unknown locations, following iron beams, which is soaking the insulation and dripping in various locations. So it's not obvious light coming through to see where those repairs are needed. And we also currently have an HVAC unit that's mounted to the roof. That, this, the reason for the higher cost as well would be because it would require removing the HVAC unit, doing the repair, roof repairs, and replacing the HVAC.
I recall when we did the remodel out there at the building, that was one of the things we should have done. We didn't have the funding to do. So now it's time to get the roof done. I totally support her motion. Any other questions on this item? I'd entertain a second to Mrs. Johnstone's motion.
Well, I don't, I don't, do we, is this a, I guess it's a voting item?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Spending money, so it's a good vote. Entertaining a second?
I'll second.
All right. Call roll, please.
Motion passes, six yeses, one absent.
Excellent. Item number 15, modification of the contract, design-built entity for the Corporation Yard Project, multiple building remodel and site work as design-built project for 655 Cal Oak. Who has this one? Oh, Tim. Welcome, Tim.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. This is a bring-back from the October 7 council meeting, where I brought a full 20-year plan for the Corp yard at over $4 million. A direction was given to get back to the approved budget. And this- And this, what you have in front of you is the reconceptual design to get to just the mechanic shop, not doing any site improvements, minimal site improvements, doing nothing in the admin shop. Everything's going to go into the mechanic shop. So I'm not extending out anything on the storefront. Showers, restrooms, and laundry facilities are going to shift over, going to evaporative cooler, going to natural gas heaters, space heaters, kind of like what's in the corp yard right now. So a yes to this one is allowing the contractor to redo the conceptual design for that space, reallocate all the, the functions from the admin facility over to the mechanic shop. And they'll get us that by the end of the year so that I can consolidate that and bring it back to vote for a contract.
Okay. Hey, oh, Councilman Johnstone.
Yeah, just a real quick question. So, I mean, if we're still doing the restrooms, locker rooms, shower laundry area, I mean, we're doing it regardless of whether it's going in the mechanics or in the admin building. Why wouldn't, why couldn't we just still, if we're still paying the money to have it done, why are we not just doing it in the admin building like we wanted to, just that section?
That required, what we had before required the extension of the facility.
The area, okay, the area where you wanted it done was the extension area. Got it. Okay. Thank you.
All right.
You looking for a motion?
I'm looking for a motion.
I move that we approve the. To increase the funding.
Second.
Second. Do we have any cards on this item?
We do not.
Call the roll, please.
Motion passes. Six yeses, one absent.
Item number sixteen, request to enter an agreement with Blue Voice LLC to provide real-time assistance to Orville Police Officers. Chief.
Since the California legislature is very cooperative with law enforcement to reduce our efforts for legal services, this is a pretty interesting AI device. I'm not a big fan of AI, but I know that's the direction. What's interesting about this one is it's not an open source AI. This is a closed-loop AI, which means it only uses AI for the data that we provide it. So essentially what this is, is software where we can enter in the penal code, the vehicle code, Orville Munich code, fishing game code, any codes we want, punch it into the system, and then we can voice ask. Let's say the officers have a, can I arrest a sixteen-year-old under the influence on a bicycle? The soft of the AI would then go to the source documents and pull up case law, penal code, vehicle code, what is, whatever's relevant, and give them immediate answers. In addition to this, it also allows us for mapping. So if we have a critical incident in a, let's say the Orville Hospital or heaven forbid a school, we can say room one, building one fifty-six, and it will go to that map, and it'll pull up a map and help us guide directly to that, to that area. It also has some voice fillable templates that allow us to create. So essentially what this is, is allows us in a much rapid, more rapid way to get to the actual source documents of the legal requirements the officers need in the field to make prompt decisions. And it also has some investigative tools where once you're asking, it'll give you some ideas of possible investigative actions. Now, the best part. The four-year contract, however, the first year is free. Then the, it's a reduced cost reduction over the year. So year one is free, year two gets a fifty percent discount, year three is a twenty-five percent discount. And then the fourth year is full price, and a year of services, sixty-nine hundred dollars.
For a full year?
For a full year. And that is for sworn officers, based off of sworn officers. However, non-sworn can use it for free. And we can package it up in different ways for dispatch if they have response issues that they might need for dealing with callers. They can voice activate, and it can maybe get them some CPR or some other readily available tools for them in a rapid situation.
There we go, huh? Councilman Johnson.
Thank you. So I am all for anything that we can do to help your officers with their job. I use AI a lot, and so I am a little bit concerned, and I think you answered some of my question in that you pre-program like our, our codes, right, our, our laws, everything. You pre-program it. But with my experience with AI, if you don't ask the question specific, like you have to be specific to what you're asking and know exactly what you're asking in order for you to get the correct information that you're asking. So what safeguards are you, is there to put in place? So are you going to pre-program these questions that they're going to ask or what? Because if you don't, if you have an officer that doesn't know AI and they don't ask a question correctly for what they're trying to obtain, they might not get the correct information.
One hundred percent correct. No, and that is something that's part of the training aspect of it. It's also a learning AI, so as it learns what you're looking for, and again, not necessarily placeholder, but those things that you regularly go to, it's going to identify that and bring those sources up to you. But no, you're, you're exactly correct. It is a learning thing. We have to learn how to ask the questions.
And, and I, I love it. I use it all the time, but again, I'm just concerned. I don't want us to, you know, not be able to prosecute something in the court of law because AI told them something and it was not the correct action.
So in that case, what it's doing is it's actually bringing up, it's, it's going to be using the same material that we would use, but instead of carrying the penal code or the vehicle code, it's going to bring up the actual code where we read the actual document. It's not interpreting it for us. It's highlighting the actual document itself.
All right.
So to reduce what we call the AI clutter, stuff that's not relevant, that confuses people, it, it's not interpreting it for us. It's bringing it directly to that location.
Okay. All right. Well, and then one more question is after year four, is it going to remain sixty-nine, seventy-five per year? If we.
We can only hope. They lock us in for four.
They lock us in for four, and then we're not going to get any more discounts or anything. If we like the program, we're going to continue to pay full price. It probably, it's going to probably obviously go up each year, I would imagine.
I would anticipate.
Is it a four-year contract each time?
We can adjust it, but this one is a four-year because of the discount package. And again, I like that one-year free service.
To try it out.
Yeah.
I think a lot's going to change in the next four years in the AI world. It's hard to predict in the next five minutes.
Councilman Goodson has a question.
The other side is, in four years, I anticipate that our agency will be about fifty officers and not thirty-one.
Yeah, I like that. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Goodson.
So my question has to do with the mapping, and so, okay, everybody knows I'm a visual learner. So let's say hypothetically, heaven forbid, there would be an active shooter incident in these chambers. Would the AI be able to provide the specs immediately for this structure right here? The vents, everything, hidden closet space, et cetera? No?
Not to that level. It's more of a, if you think of just a footprint mapping, so we would be able to tell this. I'm sorry?
A generic?
A generic. So this chamber versus the office spaces. And if we do our numbering system or our labeling system, then it will identify whatever label we call it, and it'll bring that up for us. If, if we labeled the venting, the system could do it, but then we're getting into, again, back to the other comment about what are we asking for?
Okay, thank you.
In five years, we'll probably have AI RoboCops.
I was going to say that. We just have little helmets to wear and be.
Well, the answer, part of her, part of her question is, first due for the fire service does provide that. They have a way to do that in, Chico City Fire has that, where you could actually pull up, it actually have a building plans of a building in that process. But, you know, it's not tonight, but that's, that is available.
The company's very easy to work with, so I'm hoping we could play around a little bit with it.
Vice Mayor Smith is in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see this as a double-edged sword. I'm a consumer of Audit, the Audit, or the Civil Rights Attorney stuff on YouTube. It's my pastime. And where you see a cop step over the line is when they are sure that someone has violated a particular part of the law and they're wrong. And so that exposes the city potentially unnecessarily to an arrest where none should have happened. So I see this as a huge tool that could certainly have positive outcomes. So the other side of that sword is embedding this information. Have you looked at other departments that are utilizing this tool and kind of what is their feedback?
Yes, we actually talked to a couple different agencies, including all the way down to Texas. It's been so effective for them that they actually wrote it into policy that before the street officers call for detective or the patrol lieutenant, that they have to clear it through Blue Voice. And if Blue Voice does not answer the question, then you can go ahead and call. But again, it's just going to the same sources. It just grabs you the material faster than what you could normally do. And it is not, this is not to say this is the end-all. This is a tool that we're to use to use properly because we don't want to take the officer out of the equation either. It's just getting us the, some potential answers faster.
Pretty great.
You're putting your tool back.
Yeah.
Less retention time.
Ready for a motion?
I have one quick question. I, I don't see the actual contract here. I assume there's going to be errors and omissions in this in terms of AI making a mistake for us, and there's a protection. I don't know, Mr. Ritchie can answer that.
I can. So this is like your standard software end-user license agreement. You'll see a reference in the proposal that you're acknowledging the application of that agreement and the software use agreement. Those are company-friendly agreements, so your liability, your recovery for any of the liability is really almost limited to what you pay for the software.
Sure.
So you can't, you know, you have to be aware of what you're doing. It's going to go, it's going to be, the answers you get from it are going to be governed by what you can put into it, right?
Gotcha.
So you put in your local rules, you'll put in the penal code, you'll put in vehicle code like the chief said. And it will deal with that as a closed universe, but it doesn't assume liability for how you use the output.
Okay.
There's still a requirement that police officers exercise their discretion in that regard. And then claims against us are subject to all of the normal same immunities that we would enjoy. So that's how that works, and there are links to those, you know, EULA's and software agreements in the acknowledgement page of the contract.
Thank you, sir.
And I will add that from my review of this, I don't see that it's going to lead us down a bad path. The most likely scenario we come, is it doesn't provide an answer, and that will be on our teaching to teach the officers.
There you go.
This is not a one-stop shop. This is not all your answers. Just because it didn't provide something doesn't mean the answer's not out there.
Okay.
So that'd be a training aspect to teach them on.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Excellent. I, I move.
Go ahead.
I'll second.
Go, go. Approve four-year con, agreement, agreement number thirty-five fifty-six with Blue Voice.
Thirty-five seventy-six.
Thirty-five seventy-six. Thirty-five seventy-six with Blue Voice LLC.
And we have a second? Call the roll, please. All right. Next item, number seventeen, employment agreement with Ron Belser for the position of Code Enforcement Director.
I'll make a motion. Go ahead. Make that motion.
Motion approved. Do we have any cards on this item?
We do not.
None. Call the roll.
Motion passes. Six yeses, one absent.
Okay. Item number eighteen, employee agreement with Brian Rainford, the position of City Administrator.
I'll make a motion.
I think we should pull it.
Okay, we got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
For item as agenda size under agreement number thirty-five sixty-nine. Call the roll, please.
The caveat being the, that kitchen we talked about?
Yeah.
Where, at Orville Hospital?
Almost done.
What's that?
Almost done.
Okay, okay, then, yes.
Motion passes. Six yeses, one absent.
All right. Any, any, the second public communication hearing of non-agenda items, do we have any cards?
No submitted figure cards.
All right. Future agenda items, council? Hearing none, correspondence, we have, oh, Councilman Reynolds, sorry.
I don't, this might be a little premature for a future agenda item, but I'd like to start a conversation. It might start with Amy and, and move over to Alyssa. But this intersection up here at Acacia and Oradam is the worst intersection. It is picture-perfect for a roundabout, and I would like to at least start that conversation.
They've actually, absolutely, they've actually already started. It's on our, on our list.
I saw it on the list. That's a good idea.
Couldn't agree with you more. Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor? Yep, I wish to tell you, we do have one.
Thank you, sir. Come on up.
Is that really what that is?
Wow.
That is hilarious.
It works.
Yep, videos, everything. So this is the third time I've been here about an extreme public safety issue. I'd like for expedited mitigation on it. We have ours, church, school, vocational training center. We have over a hundred beds full right now. We're getting ready to open forty more. Our office is across the street. We have to cross every day, and I would ask if we could expedite it, make it a school zone. It would really make it a blessing and a help. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You're talking about the, hi and hut, hutin? Okay. Thank you. All right.
I just want, I do want to mention, we are looking at alternatives for that.
Particularly.
Yeah.
Okay. That all being said.
Can I just say, on a side note, do I have a moment for a side note? I know we're going to get out of here. Just on, just with the, because the topic of, of AI came up. You can actually do quite, as far as finding your heritage. You, you know, because a lot of those like, I forgot the name of the ancestry dot com and all that. They rely upon information that's available on the internet. So you can actually do a lot of your own historical search on your family line and get proof for each step that goes back crazy far. So I, I did spend some of my off time, which I don't really have much, and trace some of mine going back to the sixteen hundreds. So I have like a family that fled France under religious persecution, the hug, huge knot or whatever. I have two family members that were in the Revolutionary War and the Civil War, and it's just like things that you learn if you just spend some time. And you, but if you try to do it, just so you know, you have to be persistent because it will tell you, I can't do that. And you're like, yeah, you can.
So you have to reframe?
You have to keep pushing it, and then give it information and keep pushing, and eventually it kind of breaks through the wall, and then it's like, why couldn't you do that at the beginning? Come on. So anyway, just a little factoid out there.
All right. Well, with that thought being had, we all go home and get on our computers and go to AI and look that up. I'm going to call this meeting adjourned. For the next regular meeting will be held December second.